... Our Father, we order heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And make us not temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and glory for ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Dethra?
Here.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Have you sworn in our new members?
No, but I can do that. We just stand, raise our right hand. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Ohio and that I will perform faithfully the duties of my office as member of the Board of Education of the Rolling Hills Local School District.
I will.
Congratulations.
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 Okay, our first, uh, where our business would be nomination of officers for two twenty, uh, school year. Uh, do I have a nomination for president?
I nominate Mr. Dethra for president.
My second. Nominations, is there any other nominations?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Was that a no?
Roll call.
Oh, so you want me to do the motion as?
Yeah.
Motion as double.
Good, Mr. Second.
Okay, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Do I have a nomination for vice president?
I would like to nominate Darren Singleton.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other nominations? You got every two.
That was Mr. Erbach and Mr. Dudley.
Second.
Thank you.
Well, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Mr. Singleton?
We've already done it, right? Be closed, while they be closed.
It would be closed, yeah.
They would be closed.
Yep.
Okay, uh, passing of the chair. I guess we don't have to go there.
Nope, we don't.
Uh, I'd like to adjourn the meeting since I died twenty twenty. Uh, establish Board of Education regular meeting dates and times. Uh, right now, we're at six thirty on the fourth Thursday.
Yes.
Is there a problem with that? Anybody have a conflict or would rather have a different time?
Works for me.
If it works for everybody, we're fine. If anybody's got a conflict, just say so.
You have a conflict? No, I just liked the last meeting, you know? We had to do that, Brad, because there was some stuff we, and it's, you'll see, it gets interesting at times, but.
Christmas.
Yeah, Christmas is what it was about, so.
Then Thanksgiving's always four Thursday when it happens to be back.
So we had to do a couple.
And we used to be on the third Thursday, but I have a commitment on this third Thursday, so we had to change it to the fourth. So that's.
It wasn't, it's not conflict, uh, does everyone want change to six? Or I know you work out of town.
That's, um, six thirty's works for me.
Six thirty's fine.
Six thirty?
It's fine by me.
You did your say.
So six thirty?
The third Thursday?
Fourth.
Fourth, fourth Thursday.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Need a motion and a second.
I'll do it.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Humphrey and Mr. Erbach.
Roll call, please.
Sorry.
They're pushing you right along here.
Oh, geez.
There's national championship.
Sorry. Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Okay, OSBA legislative latest on, um. That was to be the last few years, because I'm free to go to the meeting in Columbus, but, you know, anybody else would like to have it, I'm free to give it up. Well, then I need a nomination.
And more board members to go.
Dennis Dethra.
I'll second.
That's Mr. Erbach in the second, Mr. Humphrey.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Okay, appointment of Board of Education committees. Um, looking here at what we have, uh, Policy Committee Darren was on it last year. Do you want to remain on it?
No.
Huh?
No.
Not really? Okay, then we have two.
I had a couple in mind.
I'm going to try. Okay, so we have two on the Policy Committee.
You can be on however many policy.
Yeah, I see why. Probably be on one of all of them if a person wanted, right?
Well, you can only have two, but.
Yeah.
You could be on all of them.
Yeah.
Put me on it.
What exactly are we talking about?
It doesn't deal with a lot. Neola comes in, they do our policies for us, a company out of Columbus.
You sit there for like an hour, hour and a half.
They communicate with new policies and they go through the new policies and just look at them and see what needs to be changed.
It's really interesting. Really is. I don't know if you want to sit down every year.
Yeah, but one year was, two years.
Huh?
Yeah, a long time.
I'll probably.
Okay.
Mr. Humphrey, see if you can do it.
And put me on it, nobody else wants to be on it. Athletic committee, John is on it. Do you want to stay on it?
I would like to, if no one has a.
Who else would like to be on it?
I'd like to be on it.
Do you want to be on it?
I think with you. Somebody else.
Yeah. Well, Brad showed some interest, but.
John and Darren.
Okay.
So, I don't know, is that what we? Good.
Uh, student lay is on, we just need one.
And which?
Not a whole lot goes on there.
Okay.
Very little. You're in the building.
Yeah.
Now that'd be good.
We could talk about bringing that back.
Yep.
Things are calm.
Yeah, things are calm and we can.
Let's have one or one.
Because we did the student reps and different things before. We haven't done for a while.
Right.
Uh, Brian Stony is still on the Mid East, uh, board and he had a three-year term, he has one year left remaining. And he's, uh, expressed interest to stay on there, so since he has one year remaining, that's really not open.
Right.
Personnel insurance and negotiations, I am on it. We have negotiations this year with both unions, so that's going to be somewhat time consuming.
That's the only thing, guys, that one's, you're going to spend a lot of time.
Yeah, a lot of time.
If you can't do that one time, like.
And I'll stay on it because I have a lot of time.
That's a tough one, the time.
Yeah. If somebody else wants to be on it, you don't have to be the only meeting. We can keep you updated.
I just can't commit to the time.
See, I can either try.
Yeah, that's where, that's tough. And I know Darren can. We need two though, right?
Yeah, we need, I think we need two, don't we?
You do.
I just know where his, no, he's working out of town.
Yeah. If somebody's on it, they don't, they don't have.
We can keep you updated.
If I would, yeah.
You can take him and keep you updated.
Okay.
Okay.
If you got, you guys.
I can fall in.
Definite nose, Brad?
You're good.
Definite nose.
John and I are on Building and Grounds. If somebody else wants to be on Building and Grounds besides me, that's good, because I took another one or so.
I'd like to.
There you go.
Yeah, I'd like to step off that if I'm doing the other, the athletic.
And you're going to step off of that one?
I would like to, because.
Who else wants to be on it?
So we have Mr. Dudley.
Building Grounds is a great one.
I'll go.
Okay, Darren will go on it. On to all board members, community outreach. Brad, you showed interest in that?
Yes.
Is that all right with everyone?
It's fine, darling.
So you'd replace, uh, Karen? Darren's on that one?
Do you want to stay on that one or do you want to?
Uh, I'd rather not with Athletic and Building and Grounds, but if somebody. I'll do it.
You'll do it?
Okay.
You two be good on that one. Okay, that covers all of them.
Yep.
Okay.
Speak now or forever. For a year, you're.
It's yours.
We're done with that. Uh, I need a motion to appoint Candy Rich Treasurer and Secretary of the Board of Education for twenty twenty?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to establish service fund for the board. Uh, resolution for five thousand dollars for the year. Do I have a motion? What that is, that is set aside for all board members to go to meetings, different things and that. We never use anywhere near the five thousand dollars, but that's what we normally put on there.
Mr. Dudley made a motion.
Makes a nice open bar.
I'll second.
I'm looking.
Yeah, thanks. I forgot to back together. Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
We need a motion to appoint, uh, purchasing agent. Uh, be recommended to be the superintendent, Mr. Golick.
Motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley? Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Need a motion to designate the Daily Jeffersonian as our official newspaper?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
I'd like to have a motion to designate WCMJ as our official radio station.
Motion.
Motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Dudley. Roll call.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
That finishes the first part of our meeting.
Six.
And I've already.
Six, what'd you say?
Forty-two.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get to the second part.
Well, can I get a motion, second up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Motion.
Go to Darren.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to bypass the opening ceremony since we've already included that in the first part. And we have a move for the regular meeting.
Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda and the attendance, Mr. Johnson?
Motion.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Irdrak?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, Jesus, the wrong names. Mr. Dethra?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need a.
You got the wrong thing.
One out there, yeah.
Yeah, we missed those.
He recovered well.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, public participation. Uh, Ms. Sauer, Mrs. Sauer, Jeff, there she is.
Yep.
We're coming with her, do a four.
Congratulations, new board members.
Thank you.
We're welcoming you. Um, we are halfway through the year already, which is crazy. Um, it looks like we're going to have at least ten days straight of school coming back from the new year, which is never happened, I think, in the eight years I've been here.
Why you gotta say something like that?
Because I know it's coming, I, there's no, it's. So, um, we're in the middle of benchmark testing and the results that we have back right now, we do this three times a year, um, looks amazing, which is really exciting. And with no snow days in sight, this is positive news, because that means we have consecutive days of, of students in the building and teachers teaching, um, so it's really, really awesome. Um, and the sixteen days off was even better too, but the kids came back and they're like right on where they need to be, so it's, it's good, they didn't lose anything. Um, we have a fundraiser coming up the end of this month. It is Otis Spunkmeyer cookies, so, um, if you have a kid come out and ask you, please support our school. We use that for, uh, fundraising and a lot of behavioral, um, positive rewards for our students. Um, and then the last one, I just got this today and I'm so, super excited about it. Um, we got a social emotional grant, K5 did, and this is some of the materials I got, and it's about teaching kids how to, um, the ones that are struggling socially, just how to get along with others, how to have better, um, self-images, just in a fun way. There's a lot of comics in here, it's a game, so I'm excited to take it back and use it in the building and, um, keep plugging away at the school year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Icewell Elementary, Mr..
Okay, um, during the month of December, I wasn't at a board meeting in December, so, but we had a lot going on. We probably had the best Christmas for kids we've ever had across the board. I mean, uh, my office basically was like Santa's wrapping shop for the whole month of December, and, uh, it was, it was fabulous. Um, kids were in, and families, to see families come and pick up gifts and just burst into tears when they saw what they needed to, you know, load up and take home with them. That was wonderful, you know, and it just makes you feel like we're doing something right, because we, we are helping people in ways other than just academics, you know? So, and that's, that's basically what schools, I think, should be doing. Um, not that it's all about me, but, um, Dawn and I, um, are kind of on a writing rage, if you want to call it that. Um, handwriting has, is very important to, to not only small kids, but the older kids. And there's all this research out there now that proves that if we don't teach kids to handwrite and we don't use handwriting and, you know, I see some teachers that are retired in here, they're on their headrests, but it is directly related to reading and setting up your brain functions for being able to read. And if you think about, uh, as I look around the room, I'm maybe the oldest person in the room, I don't know, but, um.
Who would that happen?
No one's going to argue with you.
Well, I just know that when I learned to write, somehow I just could read, but I don't remember ever practicing anything but reading, or but writing, you know? And I love to write, but as you learn to write, you also learn to read without a lot of effort, usually. Um, and it, all of this research goes right along with the Orton Gillingham program that we just trained all the teachers in. Um, so Dawn and I had a meeting with both of our staffs. We had a meeting at Viceville. Um, we asked, uh, the kindergarten teachers and, and actually the whole staff, we, they want kindergarten to come up with. You know, we want kids to have the same writing approach all the way through. In other words, if I'm going to tell you how to make an M, I want him Humphrey to tell you the same way to make an M. Instead of, kids are getting different, I mean, some people are using Vennelian, some people are using Zainer Blosser. But Zainer Blosser has a lot of research that says, um, that they really connect with the whole reading aspect. But we asked teachers to come up with non-negotiables and we thought it was really interesting. All three grade levels came up with the same non-negotiables, and they're the same things that teachers came, that teachers really forced, you know, forced, pushed, whatever you want to call it. When I was in grade school, posture. How many people have been told to sit up in their seat? Sit up straight, if you're going to be writing, sit up straight, you know? Um, paper placement. Here, you've got to have the paper like this, because you don't, you know? Um, one hand on the paper, one hand holding the pencil. Uh, proper grasp, age-appropriate paper, caps for first letters and names of proper pronouns and, uh, lowercase letters throughout the words. Because if kids are taught to write in all caps, it's almost impossible to break. And they still want to do it, you know, to, you know, I mean, I know, I've, I've seen some high school kids that like to write with caps because they've gone and got away with it. And in all honesty, uh, we dropped the ball on reading when the digital age came in, at least, at least I, I feel like we did. I shouldn't speak for everybody. But, um, research actually shows that you have to learn to handwrite and you, students who have better handwriting, and any teacher sitting here who probably tell you this, the kids who have better handwriting are your better students. They are able, you know, and I've seen kids go from, I couldn't read, to really coming around after you make them start practicing and working. Um, you know, and I understand there's kids out there that have issues that you have to deal with a different way. I think, uh, the whole Orton Gillingham process is going to help us with that. So I really am looking forward to see what kind of results we get three years down the road when we're sending kids to Shelly and she's saying, hey, what have you guys done? But we are really into this writing thing and we're pretty committed to it. What have you guys say, Sarah?
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Seacrest Elementary, Mrs. Tare.
Did a. Uh, just wanted to talk briefly about the assessments. We do have our math star assessment done and ninety-one percent of our first graders are on track and eighty-eight percent of our second graders are on track, so I think that's well worth mentioning. Um, we got our OG lending boards, which are boards that we put cards on to flip, and they were made at, um, Mid East and they're wonderful at a nice low price, so we want to thank them for that and, um, just the quality is wonderful. On Friday, we're going to have our secret superstar celebration, that's a time bluster. Uh, we'll be recognizing perfect attendants and right now we have twenty-one students who will be giving perfect attendance, so we're also pleased with that as well. Um, recognizing student of the quarter and students that are doing well in Lexia Reading and Accelerator Reader. And again, we, we did have the staff meeting together, um, and I think that that pretty much has been taken up, but the other thing, just welcome new board members and happy new year.
Mettabrook Middle School, Mr. Ray.
Good evening, gentlemen, welcome to the ward. Three, we had three, uh, big events at middle school before, uh, before Christmas break. On December sixth, we had our MOLO experience, which is an oil and gas simulation. That was for our eighth graders, our Maker students and the students who are in the STEM class. Uh, it's a program that usually costs up to twenty-two hundred dollars, but thanks to Sandy Dowdna, uh, she was able to bring that into our, um, our school for no cost. I know six stations and each station had five different science-relevant, but also oil and gas-relevant activities on them and our kids really enjoyed it. Um, December eleventh, just a few days later, we did our annual real-world, real-money financial simulation, which is through the OSU Extension Office. I wish you guys could see the eyes of the kids when they realize how much that cell phone costs and they have to pay for it themselves and what their brand-new car that they wanted, all of a sudden is a used with three hundred thousand miles on it, if that's all they can afford. It, it's really eye-opening, our entire eighth grade went through it. And I want to thank our eighth grade social studies teacher, Mr. Norman, for organizing and bringing that in every year, he does a great job. On one day, the very next day, on December twelfth, we had our first of two big career days in conjunction with Mid East CDC. Um, our sixth and seventh grade students were able to choose four career fields out of the ten that were brought over. Uh, Robin Aquade at Mid East kind of organized all this as far as bringing the kids over. Um, I organized what was going on in our building. Um, what was great was our sixth and seventh graders really got to start finding interest and start, we started having conversations of, okay, well, if you want to do this, here's what you have to do in middle school and more importantly, the first two years of high school to get there. Um, secondly, the really cool part was about ninety-five percent of the presenters, the student presenters from Mid East are current Mettabrook students, so it's really, they could, they really get relevant there. Um, I do want to thank Robin, you know, I know she's not here, Um, I do want to thank Robin, you know, I know she's not here, but her level, I mean, the amount of work she had to do was great, I mean, it was good conjunction. Our eighth grade is actually going to go through a similar event on March third. Uh, and lastly, as my own personal thing, Scott, Candy and related to Ally, that program we did for kids, in twenty years of education, it's the best thing I've been part of in the school, so, that was awesome, so.
Okay, thank you. Metta Brook High School, Mr. Dudley.
Mr. Wheeler couldn't be here tonight, he's a sick son, but, um, I agree on the Angel Tree and the Christmas initiative, that was impressive, I know at the high school, we spent three hundred plus dollars on twenty-one students and siblings and it, it really was amazing, a lot of tears, like Dale said, really impressive. Um, we talk a lot about career and college, but we're also continuing our instructional focus, transition to the new test. Earlier this year, we had staff completely rewrite bid terms, you know, standards-based and vary the depth of knowledge of the questions, so we could, at this point in the year, start breaking those down, we started doing that. You know, we're really trying to push a business model when it comes to the, the data breakdown with the instructional goals, so staff that had been having weekly meetings to determine how students scored, not only on the standards, but once given the depth of knowledge with the questions, that's really going well. That informational then go to guide our future plan instruction, especially for the end-of-course test. Uh, counselors and I have been working on new graduation requirements, which is kind of a mess as it stands right now. The full changes won't take effect till the twenty-twenty-three graduation year, but they're kind of putting some of it in now, but kind of like here, D E always says, they're building a plane while it's in the air, so when we get the rest of the details from the state legislature, the O D, I'll give a presentation here on it. Hall of Fame Committee met today for the first time this year, Mr. Humphrey and I have also been discussing assisting to bring Hall of Fame inductees back to speak to the students, hoping to inspire students, create some possibilities. We had our first, our ski club, we could, uh, Mr. Gay has created a ski club last year, they actually went on their first trip last week, went very well, they're going to go again this Wednesday, they had twelve kids sign up for that. Dak also had their first big competition of the year, they think they scored very well, even though they're in a much higher division this year, we're still waiting to get the results on that, and, um, yeah, we're going to go back for a few days, but we're back in full swing at times.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, curriculum, Mr. Meredith.
Just a couple of quick things, we had our second staff wellness day last Friday, this is a part of the district strategic plan created by the D L T to incorporate some staff wellness activities to support them, because their teachers, our pair pros, our principals, tutors, our staff is in the trenches, we need to support them and let them have some team bonding sometime. Um, so it was enjoyable second day and I thank everybody for being involved in planning that, and then also, our digital badging program is in its second year, this is a way for us to be able to provide professional development that's differentiated for everyone across the board, whatever their job may be in the district. Um, and I did some mid-year stats, we have seventy-four staff members that have voluntarily participated in it, um, for a total of three hundred and nineteen optional course offerings, um, and that goes towards helping with licensure, that goes for some of the required trainings that they have to do in order to maintain their license, um, and it's been a neat program, there's been some healthy competition, and it's been neat to see that everybody engaged in the majority, so it was just kind of neat to compile that, and I'm looking forward to this year at the end of the year, kind of matching, uh, if not exceeding what we did last year with it, so.
Just to get it on the record, Mr. Golick and I are the U K champions of the district. By a wide margin.
You don't get a badge for that, no.
We don't lose on Friday.
Did there any public participation, anyone else like to speak? I don't think there's anyone signed in. Okay, we'll go to the treasurer's report.
I have approval limits from December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, approval of the December two thousand and nineteen financial report, approve the resolution accepting rates as presented, that is from the county, we do it every year, we're just approving the rates that they lock in, the military's. Uh, I talked to all of you guys about this, but approve an insurance holiday for January premiums, um, they pay January pre- premiums in December, so this holiday already happened for them, it's not an additional holiday, it's a one we discussed.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Motion.
Motion, do I have a second? Discussion? Is there a question?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I was not present for this. Do I remember?
Yes.
Yes, because we passed a motion.
Yep.
Okay. All right, well, because I didn't, I didn't know about the limits, the finance report from last week.
Yeah, yeah, you still.
I got it, but I didn't, okay. Just make sure.
The question's a problem.
It is a good question.
I've never thought of that, actually.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Detra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Since all the standing committees have changed, if there isn't anything anybody has to say on any of them from the last call.
One brief. That is funny. Just, I wanted to get, I wanted to get something in tonight, uh, for one on athletic, and so I thought I'd start with the athletic, I want to thank Mr. Golick and everybody on, uh, implementing some type of seating, and I haven't been there to see it, and I, I just haven't been able to make a game. But with the bleacher situation, you know, we've had two or three people come to meetings and inquire, you know, with handicap situation and different things, well, our bleachers are old, and so, you know, we got to watch how we handle that, we've talked, this has been a subject that's went off and on here for a while, well, I guess we're.
We have six seats in the front row.
Yes.
Which, which is designated for, for those who need, and it's just not wheelchair, you could be on a crutch, uh, you know, you could be on a cane or, you know, something of that nature. Uh, we also have a specific place designated, uh, Mr. Wheeler spoke at the, um, uh, at the ECOL meeting to let all A Ds inform their people that if they need the seating, where it is located, and if they didn't, who to look for at our gymnasium to find out where the seating is.
But I wanted everybody to know that we, we, we didn't just ignore that, it was just something that, you know, it was brought up, I know, on two occasions, and it's, it's been addressed, and I, I want to thank everybody, Mr. Golick especially, for making sure that that's got, uh, some attention, you know, I, 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 I'm not there yet, but someday I might, I might need a seat in those, set in those seats. One other thing, uh, I had in my travels, I had two or three of my customers through my, my business, uh, that had Christmas letters, elderly people. And they, they, you know, they said, you're on the board, right, and I said, yeah, and, and so some of, I, I thank everybody in here who's aware, but I want to thank you, everybody, Mr. Golick, everybody that was involved in this Christmas, this, this year, I want to thank you, because that was an initiative that was huge, that people don't realize the time you've spent. And this gentleman, the one, Mr. Franco, he has two, two kids that went to Rolling Hills, and he got a letter, you know, an older gentleman, I mean, that's amazing, you know, what you guys did. So I just want everybody to know, I mean, it gets overlooked sometimes, you know, after the holidays, everybody's like, oh, yeah, but people, it's going to bring, it's going to bring everybody together, you know, it's, it's a good, positive thing, and Mr. Golick, I think a lot of it was your initiative.
Well.
So, but I know everybody works, so I've already seen you ladies in here working, Lisa wanted help and hadn't canceled.
Candy worked her rear end off.
Yes, Candy, I want to give you.
Yes, she was amazing.
I mean, and you know who you are, but, so, the newspaper, make sure you guys say what this, this district did with, with the holidays this year. It was amazing, so, I want to sneak that in, it's not athletic, but I knew. But thank you, okay, thank you guys, that's amazing, it's awesome.
We received thank you cards, it was really.
Did you?
Yes.
There was one that, and they would address them to the kid, they sent the card, so there's a second grader at Byzville named Delaney, she received a Christmas card with a dollar in it, and it just reminded me like what grandparents do, like the.
And I know.
Send that dollar and, so we just sent it right on to the school, to the.
The work you guys put into that is, is over and beyond.
And some of the kids, I, I'd hate to keep going with this, but some of the kids who don't get to decorate Christmas cookies, to see them decorating cookies was probably the biggest joy for me. Now, it was hard work because the ladies were putting cookies and they were icing everywhere, but they, some of them, you could just see a smile on their face because they had never decorated a Christmas cookie, so, kudos to everyone, there's so many people involved, kudos to everyone.
That's all, that's amazing, and hopefully we can do it again next year.
I'm excited for next year, I want it, every year, I want one of those, that's going to be annoying, like, can we grow this, like, how many kids, like, how many cards can we send out this year, how many kids?
And if you know somebody that you talked to in, in your, your passing that didn't get a card, that maybe should have, Candy, that was hard, that was a tough, a tough thing to make sure, I haven't heard anything but positives.
Good.
And, and I just, I, I gotta, I gotta commend everybody, thank you.
Team. We're down supervisor reports, they're not here, old business. The old business?
Yep.
The old business. Superintendent.
Okay, superintendent report is very small tonight, I would like to recommend A, B and C, uh, B, Candy, was that part of the Christmas program donation?
No, this was something else, they collected, they just burned a check.
Okay, with a dental, donated eight hundred dollars, so, uh, recommend A, B and C.
Do I have a motion for items A, B and C?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the three items? Roll call, please.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detra?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Yerick?
Yes.
Correspondents. No correspondents?
Nope.
Any informational items? Did you say we do not need the executive session?
Do not, won't have that.
Okay, well, we'll move to the journal, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, we congratulate you too in your first board meeting, and I'll take motions to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
He's asleep already.
Oh.
These two didn't announce the dress code for the seat. I didn't get the memo. Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Okay, we're back to regular board meeting, right?
Yes.
Board.
What day is that?
Yeah, February twenty-seven.
February twenty-seven. February twenty-seven.
Meeting adjourned.